Good evening, everybody. Glad everybody could join us this evening. This is a public meeting of the Denham Springs City Council held in Dayton, Kentucky, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. In the courtroom here with the municipal building, 116 North Raines Avenue here in Denham Springs, Louisiana. All messages have been posted and the media has been notified as required by law. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask a couple of people to leave us the indication and the pledge. Stand.
Thank you, Mayor. That's great. Father, we're humbled again to invite you into this chamber as we give you thanks for the privilege of service to this great community. God, we just ask that you would find favor upon the direction in which we go with big decisions and with little ones. Father, that you might be glorified in all that we do and with all that we have. So, we love you as we give you thanks. We ask for your wisdom as we give you thanks for those that live here, that work here, those that serve here, and all of the things that make this such a great place to live. We love you as we give you thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
I declare the leaders to the right of the United States of America and through the Republic which stands one nation, under thy, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our votes in some roll, please.
Dugos, Eric Gilbert.
Here.
Lam Williams.
Here.
Poole.
Here.
Wesley.
Here. Thank you, ma'am. All right, so we'll start off with agenda item number one, reports. Your official?
Our report was sent out last week, I guess, but I'm just going to point out item number one on there. We do have a supermarket coming down the street, model.
All these.
Spring Park Plaza, as far as.
Very good. Do we have an anticipated opening date yet?
Not yet.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may interrupt you very briefly for a point of order. I have a daughter performing in the Gifted and Talented Theater presentation this evening.
Okay.
If it pleases the council, after number seventeen, if you'll humor me, I'm going to excuse myself.
That's fine.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so knowing that we'll skip one through twelve, no. Number eighteen. Here we go. Okay, so city building official emailed out the report, city attorney.
Mayor.
Engineers, I think we have some items, yeah, we have some engineers here with us this evening, okay. Planning and zoning, we have Mr. Bill Lawson with us.
We met last night, Mayor. We authorized two public hearings for next block for Lay Down Yard on East Street and a side variance over in the Ivies. And we acted favorably on the side yard variance over on Leslie Street last night.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Fire report, I think is in your work. Chief, do you have anything you need to add to that?
Nothing to add, sir.
All right, sir. Animal report, I think is in your work as well, and we have police report. Rodney, do you have anything you need to add, chief?
No, sir.
Okay, very good. All right, so move over to item two. Approve as published in the Official Journal minutes of April 28, 2025, City Council meetings.
Second.
Busham Wesley and second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos, yes. Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Item three, adopt the consent agenda for April 1, 2025 through April 30, 2025.
Motion approved.
Motion by Gilbert.
Second.
Second by Dugos. Madam Clerk, call for the vote, please.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Item number four, appoint Karen Watkins as Asia Rookie for our health insurance. Karen is in the room with us this evening. Motion by Wesley.
Second.
Second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk, call for the vote, please.
Dugos, yes. Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Item five, approve the Blue Cross Health Insurance Plan. Michelle, does you want to address that or Karen?
Karen Valerie Smith.
Karen, Dr. Gilbert, come up there.
Well, so, you know, what I'm seeing in the market and what we had with the Denham Springs case over the past year is another high utilization claims situation. Our loss ratio was, over the last twelve months, was ninety-five percent. So, ninety-five cents out of every dollar that was paid in premiums went out in claims. Since July of 2022, loss ratio is one hundred and two percent. So, we are managing things, I think, as best we can. This year, we took the information and we sent it out to three or four different carriers to see if there was anybody that would offer us something that was attractive. In the end, that didn't really happen because we have to give them the lost information. They won't offer or look at a possible quote without it. So, the next step that we do is we go to Blue Cross underwriting and we, for lack of better words, beg. And we did that. Unfortunately, some years it works. This year, it just didn't, it didn't work. So, we, with a little modification on plan design, we're looking at five and a half percent price increase. So, I feel like that it's as fair and equitable as it can possibly be.
And then we also, this year, included thirty percent of the plus one for families.
Plus one families, correct. Last year, we did twenty-five percent were increased.
Move up to thirty. Okay, health insurance, oh, we have to do each one. All right, so motion for consent Blue Cross, approved.
I don't make a motion.
Motion by Wesley.
Second.
Second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos, yes. Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Item six, approve the health reimbursement account. That's remain the same as $3,000 a year if we help with our employees' out-of-pocket expenses.
Yeah.
That's the HRA. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Lam Williams.
Second.
Second by Wesley. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos, yes. Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Item seven, approve corporate professional link for the HRA administration. It's four dollars and fifty cents a month. It's a fee, same as last year. Same question, okay?
Motion approved.
Motion by Lam Williams, second by Dugos. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Item eight, approve Blue Cross Vision Insurance. Costs four dollars and ninety-two cents a month for employees.
Motion approved.
Motion by Gilbert.
Second.
Second by Dugos. Madam Clerk, call for the vote, please.
Dugos, yes. Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Item nine, approve United Healthcare Life Insurance. That's twelve dollars a month for employees for up to $50,000 in coverage.
Same.
Motion by?
Is that the same?
Same, same number, same amount?
That's the same.
Same amount, no change.
Motion by Lam Williams.
Second.
Second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Item ten, approve wage works for a corporate administration. It's a dollar and seventeen cents per month. That's for folks that leave our employment and want to carry their health insurance forward with them.
For employee, it is either a termination.
Right.
It allows them through a federal program to stay on the group plan for up to eighteen to thirty-six months.
Okay. Motion by Wesley.
Second.
Second by Dugos. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Item eleven, approve citizens dental insurance for our employees. That's $29.31 a month. Is that the same amount?
No change.
No change, all right.
Same.
Motion by Dugos.
Second.
Second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Item twelve, approve Hidalgo Health Associates as administrator for the Employee Assistance Program. That works out to a dollar and seventy-seven cents per employee per month. That's it, okay?
Motion approved.
Motion by Gilbert. Second by Dugos. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Item thirteen, approve Louisiana Workman's Co- Corporation for Workman's Comp Insurance. This year, the premium is $381,819.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lam Williams.
Second.
Second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Okay, item fourteen, introduce and authorize a public hearing for an appeal to consider the preliminary platte of the 12.736 track lots one through thirty-nine and lots CA-1 and CA-2 located in section forty-eight. T6S-R3E GLD, City of Denham Springs, Livingston, Parish, Louisiana. RS-833V3 requested by Draco Development LLC. That's near and deep before Hatchell Lane. Public hearing to be held June the 10th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. in the courtroom of the Municipal Building.
Motion to authorize for public hearing.
Motion by Lam Williams.
Second.
Second by Dugos. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
No.
Wesley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item fifteen, introduce an ordinance and authorize a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance to ban the sale of kratom to be held June the 10th, 2025 at 6:00 p.m. in the courtroom of the Municipal Building. We had tabled this last meeting. I think Amber was looking to get some more information.
I did.
But we're just authorizing the hearing today.
That's right.
All right.
Yeah, I've got the motion to approve the authorize the hearing.
Motion by Dugos. Second by Gilbert. Madam Clerk, call for the vote.
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lam Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley.
Yes.
Item sixteen, hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance to create council districts for the establishment of three districts with two at large for a total of five council seats. I think some people have signed up to speak. I think CJ has the signing sheet just to lie out, okay? And I know we have a spokesman on the far side. That's Dr. Walker. And do we have a spokesman for the side that's against it? We do not? All right, so what we're going to do is we're going to give Dr. Walker ten minutes to cover, or Les, let's say, Aiken, okay? Okay, so we have ten minutes, and I have a timer, so when here goes off, we need to stop, all right? So, we're going to do it ten minutes, and if, and look, if the, if the people that are against it want to speak, I'll give the first person ten minutes, then everybody else will have three, okay? All right. So, Ms. Aiken, you want to come first?
Thank you all so much for giving us this time and the privilege to speak with you as you have done over the past few months, and we're very grateful. Two years ago, in a conversation with Mayor Landry, he and I realized we were on the same page concerning the need for districts in the city. It was Denham Springs. I asked Catherine Martin, a native of Denham Springs, and Pastor Jackie Reed, also a native of Denham Springs, to join me in researching and developing a proposal for districts in our city. After two conversations with Mayor Watson of Walker, who had just completed enthusiastically a successful transition to districts, after multiple meetings with mayor and our city attorney and our city clerk, after one-on-one meeting, one-on-one meetings with four of you in November to just listen and hear what your thoughts were about having districts in our city, and then again in February, three of us meeting with four of you again just to share with you what we thought about this. So, finally, we thought we were at a point to rally from our, and learn from what we had obtained in our research and to create a proposal that would be ready for you this evening. So, this proposal is going to be presented to you by Derwin, Dr. Derwin Walker, and Catherine Martin will share with you details about the map at its conclusion, and then we'll see where it goes from there.
You have eight and a half minutes.
So, just to give you an idea of the thought process that went behind this, the objective Leslie's already really stated is to divide the city into three geographic locations, districts, each with a council member who lives in and represents that specific district, and then to have two at-large council members that represent the entire city as a whole. The committee felt that this would ensure that every area of the city has a fair, responsive, and accountable representation. So, again, each district would have a council member who resides in the district, better to know the specific needs of the people in that district. And then, you know, two-thirds of the, of the council would be not from a specific district, but would have a broader perspective for the whole city as a whole. So, um, so that would give people in the city a specific representative with which they would have contact, which that representative would be responsive to a fewer number of people, giving people more access to them, the ability to know who it is they go to if they have an issue that they need addressed. And then the two at-large to really look out for the entirety of the population of the city. So, the committee just felt that that would give more accountability and clearer communication channels between the citizens and their representatives. And this is especially true because each district can have unique concerns that need to be addressed. And sometimes, there isn't even anybody who lives in that area of the city, even on the council. So, again, it puts the representatives closer to the issues, closer to the constituents, but still allows for that larger picture because two-fifths of the council would not be accountable to a district, but rather to the city as a whole. So, same thing here, I think. And so, I think the idea is to ensure both neighborhood-specific concerns and broad community needs that both are addressed. The committee felt that this would encourage transparency, would lead to a fairer representation for everyone in the city, and that it would align council members to the communities that they are meaning to serve. So, I mean, logic for a structure such as this is inherent to the, to the structure of our entire country. So, representative government by district is how we do it in the United States. We don't elect congressmen at large from the entire United States. That ensures that people from each area of the country have a voice in the government. Again, the state government is the same way. In fact, in state government, even the Senate is elected in that same manner so that we don't really have anyone other than the governor looking out for the, for the needs of the whole. I think that this plan that they've come up with gives a good balance between meeting the needs of smaller individual districts while at the same time not neglecting the importance of the unity of the city. So, as you know, many communities have moved toward this sort of government, and we think that it would be a good thing for Denham Springs as well. We think it would improve trust and would encourage the people of the city to be more engaged and involved in government, and that it would increase responsiveness because people would know the channel that they need to go through in order to get heard. All right, yeah, I think we've covered this. That's just the summary. So, three districts, two at-large, giving us this sort of balanced picture of representation by district balanced off by representation of the whole.
I'm just going to speak briefly about the proposed districts, the boundaries. So, District One would be starting at the northern boundary of the city limits, and it would come all the way to Stephen Drive, that little bit of Cochrane to Hatchell, down to Florida Boulevard, and then the southern boundary right there is the railroad tracks. District Two would be from Hatchell over to the eastern boundary, which turns into Pete's Highway, and then across Florida, and then down Range. And District Three would be from the Amite River to Range and down to Vincent Road. And the, the districts are each, by law, within a hundred people of each district. You can see at the bottom the estimated population of each, and we use the census data from the 2026s to come up with those numbers.
Did you get their name and addresses? It's okay, very good.
It's only to say it on record so we can imagine if I have a voice with the person.
So, speaking so far was Leslie Akins at 536 Centerville Street Northeast as a spokesperson for the group for districting. Dr. Derwin Walker, 506 Maple Street Four, and gave the presentation and summary of the proposal. Catherine Martin, also of 506 Maple Street, gave an example of the district.
Okay.
Thank you. If each person would say their name in their own voice, so that we're listening to the recording, we know who's speaking, that would be great.
Okay, CJ, do you have most of the people that want to speak signed up?
No.
Do you not? Okay, so why don't we start on?
I do have one against who signed up first, so if you want to speak to her.
I'm sorry, do it now.
I said we do have one that signed up to go against.
Okay.
Who started?
Just one?
So far.
So, one, just one so far?
Do you want me to just move through and see who wants to, or do you want them just come up and speak?
Yeah, that might be easier for you, if they just come up, right? Okay, so we, I think we're going to do.
Brenda Edwards was the first to sign.
Let's do, let's do the front row, and then work our way back. Is that fair enough?
My name is Dr. Doug Strickland. I live at 963 North River Road. I didn't find out about this until yesterday, so I'm probably asking questions that maybe have already been answered or whatever. I think it's a good idea. I don't have any big problem with it. A question, though, whether we have our election machines done right in order to get this district in.
This election will not take place until November of next year. So, the law says we have to have the plans in place one year before the next election so that we have time to educate the electorate.
Yeah, because the machines at each location.
They will be.
Handle it. Adjust it for that.
They will be, they will be accordingly, that's right, adjusted, okay? All right. Somebody over here, too, as well, okay? Paul Kirk, 406 Centerville Street, Denham Springs, 70726. Northeast, yes. First off, I want to thank the council for their service. When we think about politics and serving the people, that is really the purpose of why we're here tonight, right? Is to serve the people of Denham Springs, to provide a service unto them, to make it a better place to live and for what we do. When we think about service, too often, we've all experienced in politics where service leads to corruption or power grabs. But what an opportunity this is for us as a people to come together to say, we're going to, we're going to empower the people to support specific candidates within our districts and to be accountable for how we vote and what we do, and to be able to fulfill the needs of our people. Too many times, we allow the fear of accountability, especially from the people, to cloud our judgment in voting. Not that I think that this council would, because my experience has been that you have been very forthright about fulfilling the needs of the people and fulfilling their will, and I appreciate that. I encourage you to do that tonight as well. The opportunity for us to set forth the boundary so that the people can be accountable, or you can be accountable towards the people is a beautiful, beautiful part of politics. We get into service to serve, and we need to keep that in mind. When we take a look at the political landscape of how things have gone on a national level and even all the way down, the people are demanding more accountability upon politicians. The people are demanding more accountability of what's happening. And this is a great opportunity for us as a community to come together and say, we accept that accountability. We're going to empower the people to give that accountability to, back to you, and it will give the people, as we look around this room, it's standing room only, and what an opportunity for it up, for it is for you to say, we want to hear you. We want to hear you by district and I want to represent you. So, I encourage every one of you to, let's vote yes, and let's accept that power back to the people and accept that accountability piece. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kirk. So, we're going to do a front row. Anybody else on the front row there would like to speak? No way? All right, so let's go to the side room, CJ, the front row there, anybody else? All right, let's do the second row on that side, yeah, that side? Okay.
Did you come back?
I know, I'm so sorry. I just wanted to let you know that we did do a petition in the past ten days. We have well over 200 people who have signed it. I personally would like to attest to my experience. No wonder you all love knocking on doors so much. It's lovely, it's wonderful meeting these people, it's great. But anyhow, I did go to sixty-five different, address, sixty-five different, I addressed sixty-five different residents by going door to door, and this is significant. One person said no. I took my notes, I've got the addresses. One person said no. Now, two people said they were moving and going out of town in a couple of weeks, so they didn't want to sign the petition. Another person said that they, he preferred to be here tonight to be able to hear what was going on. And another person said they're not really into politics, so they'd rather just steer clear. But that's significant. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Leslie, do you mind, what, where did you go for?
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, you don't have to say every address.
Yes. No, that's, I meant to say that to you. I went to randomly to two streets in each district. I went to Oak and Pine in District One, I went to Boulevard in Jason in District Two, and Florida Boulevard in Beauvillage in Three. Thanks.
All right, anybody else on that road that wants to speak? Before we're done, okay?
Anyone want to speak on this side?
Don't be bashful.
Where we come?
How's everybody doing this afternoon? Reverend Deborah Keller, pastor of Robertson, 201 Julia, Denham Springs, Louisiana. First of all, I want to commend you guys with an excellent job that you did on this map. I love the way it's designed. I think it's a really fair distribution of the population, and I just kind of want And I just kind of want to echo the sentiments that everyone brought forth so far, and just kind of put my spin on it a little bit, if you don't mind. In my research, I found that, so I kind of feel like the body, the council should make up the the makeup of the whole city in which we live as it relates to our demographics, okay? When I talk about demographics, I found out that there were 73.1% whites and 11.7% blacks are non-Hispanics, and 52.26 Hispanics in the Denham Springs community. And I think this is a great time and great opportunity to give everybody the true representation that we know and deserve for our city, know that our areas are represented. And I speak about the black community in specific in that it's kind of hard to get an African American elected based on the few that we have. And we really haven't had true representation since Mr. Perkins passed five years ago. And it's not because you guys don't care what's going on. You don't know, because you're not in the trenches of some of the areas that maybe have been neglected, again, not caring, but just not knowing. But if someone was in these areas that we think that maybe underserved could be better served, if someone could focus more so on the area like that. So just wanted to put that out there. I know everyone has an open heart and open mind. Districts is the way to go, from a national level down to the local level. Denham Springs has been on the cutting edge of many opportunities that we're proud of. We're a little behind on this, but I know we're going to catch up. So I want to thank you guys, and God bless you. Keep yours my prayer.
All right, somebody else? CJ on that side?
On this side?
On that road, okay? Go across.
Yes, ma'am. Kevin Acord, 1403 Stevens Drive. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
I mean, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Amen.
You know what I'm saying? If it ain't broke, don't fix it. I've heard that tonight. You're going to have someone come up and speak later who wants to vote a certain way, or wants y'all to vote a certain way because of what their daddy said, eons and decades ago, except for the fact that we don't use the same internet that their dad did because we don't have that. We don't use the same medical. We don't use anything because of progress. Just because you don't see something as broken does not mean it isn't broken. It isn't broken for you. Now, here's the reality. I'm assuming all five of you up there tonight, none of which have ever knocked on my door. The only person that's ever knocked on my door cannot get elected in this city. I know his mother. I know his daughter. I know his wife. And more importantly, he sends me memes on Facebook, so I know he cares, and he knows. But I would assume that all five of you are up there tonight because you genuinely believe that you are what's best for this city. And I'm here to tell you, I don't disagree with you. Just put your money where your mouth is. Nobody should be threatened by this at all. It's literal government 101. Yeah, I'm fired up, and yeah. Yeah, I ruffle feathers. That's why I'm asking for, I'm asking for three brave people tonight. Three brave people tonight that see this. If you don't think representation is a problem and an issue, it's because you have plenty of it. And I would suggest you look at issues and start to look at your Bibles. I mean, we're sitting here praying. I got someone that's more concerned about whether I work 13 hours a day and I'm wearing a cap than representation tonight. Really? Now, I'm asking you to please be brave, and please look beyond our own self-interest. Three districts, people represented. And then, so no one can hijack, two that are overseeing the good of all. Man, if that's not what this city needs, and way more desperately what this country needs, take my citizenship, man, I don't know what I'm doing. I'm asking you to look at your Bibles. I'm asking to put yourself in someone else's shoes and say, if you don't think representation is a problem, it's because you have plenty of it. Just think about that. Thank you.
Okay, sir. Is that a road? Nobody else? Okay.
Fourth row? Red's hit. Yes, ma'am. Anyone? Anybody on the fourth row on this side? Anybody on the fourth row on that side? You're the twenty-fourth. Yes, ma'am. Either one. I'm sorry, that was not clear. So either four or against. Anyone who wants to speak?
All right. Jan Fairchild, 410 South Street.
Another doctor's in there.
I have several concerns. One is, I don't understand how the voting's going to work. You're going to have two, you have people who are going to run for each district, and then separate people who will run at large? Okay. I don't like that at all, because it may, some people may keep them from running or keep them from getting out of being elected. I have never had trouble with anyone on the council for the 20-something years that I've lived here. I can call anyone. I want to. And I've always had any issue I have, whether with my business or our home, taken care of. I don't see if, and I don't see how, and I love every one of y'all, how five of you opposed to all of us in our city why we can't vote on this issue. Why should just five elected officials vote on such an important change in our government where we, as a people, all voters should not have a voice? And I want to make sure everyone who's concerned with this issue are our citizens, not outside forces. You know, us who pay our taxes, our business taxes and our personal taxes. And I think that is all. And I don't know how the districts, they were by population, so I don't know if that will somehow kick some of y'all out who can run for the district that you're in. And also, I know we're so concerned about representation. I've always wondered why we're not concerned about term limits. That's a whole other story, but that has something to do to how our governments run. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Brenda Edwards. I live at 1003 Baytree Drive in Denham Springs. And I want to thank the mayor and also the council for hearing us tonight. I am one of those whose dad, who goes and listens to their dad a lot. My father, for those of you that don't know me, was a city alderman for three different terms in this town. And then he also, it was in the city. He also became the city clerk for over 20 years, and served on the Drainage Commission and on Planning and Zoning. And he loved this city. He was on everything he could be on when it came to serving the people of this city. And my father and I had several conversations about this very issue, about dividing into districts prior to his decease in 2023. He was dead-set against districts. He did not believe, he believed that all aldermen, or now called city councilmen, should represent all of the people. And I understand why this has come to fruition. I understand the reasons behind why. The committee has done a good job of researching and everything. But I was also interested with this lady's statistics about the number of whites to the number of blacks in the city. And for those of you that want to make this a racial issue, it's not necessarily a racial issue. It is for the betterment of all the citizens of Denham Springs. My family is in opposition to this because we believe that all the aldermen of the city council should represent all of the people. And it's not about the fact, she said, that someone could not get elected. Mayor and city councilman, you know, we had Arthur Perkins on the council for many, many years. And he was elected and re-elected, and I voted for Mr. Arthur. I believed in what he believed in, and I supported him when he ran. I also supported Ray Riley, because I believed in him, and I believe in what he stands for. I know Ray and have been knowing him for many, many years. My dad believed in voting for the person. He believed in voting for someone who could represent this city and who would love this city as he did. And all I want to say is, in his memory, I am and my family is against this proposition. And I know that you will vote your heart, and I appreciate everything and all the considerations that you have done, and also the committee's research. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that.
My name is Robert Mallor. And yes, that's my sister. And my dad was, too. 1107 Amy Street, off of Pete's Highway in Denham Springs. I questioned the data that's on this map. I know they say they took it from the 2020s. But if you just take a look at Cook Room and across the street from Cook Room, that is an undeveloped piece of property. How can there be 136 people there on an undeveloped piece of property? If you look up at the Willows back home, Weaken Willow back there, they got 107 people in two streets. I would argue that point. If you look up toward North River Road, 166 people in Boval village apartments, that would have exceeded the fire code, if I'm not mistaken, to have that many people in those apartments. And that's what's there. So I would question, before you did anything, check the data on your districts to avoid any kind of potential lawsuits for not having the proper number of people in those districts.
You press for him. Leave with your friend. Thank you.
Can we make one second mark? Just give us one second. So you want to ask on this one? Fifth row? Fifth row?
Dennis Myers. 1104 Willow Glen Drive. I actually came here out of curiosity. First of all, thank you all. I think you're, you got to do an outstanding job. I mean, genetically, or not, generically, not genetically. No, really. It's a really good council, and I think this group has done a really good job. And I was really more curious about anything, like many of the people here that came in and said, what's this really all about? How's this going to impact me if it does go through? Personally, I'm kind of for it. I can take it either way, but I'm kind of for it simply because I like the idea where someone is a little more accountable for what's going on in the district that represents me. But then again, having, you know, at least two people overall is, I think, an outstanding idea. Don't lock ourselves into anything. The other thing to think about is, luckily, this city doesn't have a lot of extra property left to develop. So I don't look, I mean, subdivisions change. Populations change. People move. Diversity. It's constantly moving around. And what is in a subdivision now, the people that live there now, may not be there in 10 years. It may be an entirely different group, people that moved, whatever. I remember when I moved in the Willows, there were a lot of rules about what you could and could not do. Well, pretty much all that's gone when you've got three and four families living in the same home right now. I mean, I understand those things happen. All I'm saying is, remember, with these districts, like they are, the idea of this, no matter what happens in those subdivisions, that will be well-represented, in my opinion. I think would be well-represented. So I think it's a good idea. But again, I think the way they laid this map out is not bad. You might tweak it a little bit, it's really not bad, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name's Reverend Arthur Gilmore, 122 Willow Street. First of all, I'd like to say thank God for this opportunity to have a say-so in this whole process. Thank God for the mayor and his official staff, and to everyone that's here that's concerned about the future of how councilmen or councilpersons are elected. And I believe that, first and foremost, that we're all better together in moving forward as a city. I grew up in this city of Denham Springs. I've been here all of my life. I graduated from Denham Springs High School, and I have all of my ties here, friends and relatives. And one thing that I have learned, not discounting what the mayor, the council has done up to this point, and you've done a tremendous job. And I think things work better from the inside out instead of from the outside in. And Sister Akins, and Pastor Akins, rather, and her crew have done a great job in getting all this information together. I just think if you know what's going on, on the home front internally, things can work out better. I know folks say, if it ain't, like the folk on speaker said, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, or what have you. Certain things, you might agree with that. But we want a better future. And the only way we can do that is to come together and know that are closest to whatever problem in whatever district is. Because see, when you get a people, if you allow them their input and include them instead of, you know, excluding them, then I think things will grow better and faster. And everybody, I know you can't make everybody happy, no matter what you do. You can't please all the people some the time. And so I live by just pleasing God all the time. And God said, where there's unity, there is strength. And that strength comes from within and not without. And so we praying and hoping that, you know, that some changes may be made, and hopefully in the near future. And I think, as I go to my seat, that if we do this, I think overall, Denham Springs would be a better place to live. Thank you for your time. God bless you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Going to come back around to you, people?
Anybody else? Is there anybody else?
Last row? Anyone have anything to say? State your name and address.
DNC Hill, 2524 Chantelane, C-H-A-N-T-U-L-A-N-E. And I want to thank you all, too. I want to thank the committee who did all of this. I value the work that everybody has put into this and will continue to put into the concept. I'm a history buff. I love knowing about and valuing the way things were in the past. I very much value the way our entire country has been built. I value the fact that the Louisiana Purchase was made, and that area stretched from the Gulf to Canada. But as time went on, it served the country better to divide that purchase into different areas, which became many different states. I very much value the history of this city. I love this city. I've been here for 37 years, and I've seen a lot of mayors. I've seen a lot of councilmen. And I think a wonderful job has been done up to this point. But I think this is a very, very positive move for the city. I think that this is something that we need, and I support it 100%.
Thank you, ma'am.
We got a back row on this side. Want to take it back? Anyone else who wants to speak?
Is there anybody else that skipped over? Anybody else?
I heard somebody say something about history. Do we want to repeat the history of Dillon Springs? Because if you really want to talk about it, the real history of it, wouldn't look good. Not from my perspective. We ain't talking about the other perspective. Talking about mine. So if we're talking about representation, this view wise, we're talking about involving the people in a certain area and being looking out for them. But each one of you, you've all been, I've been here, I know everybody up there. I've been here several nights, and you represent us. But you represent Dillon Springs has a hole in its entirety. But there are problems. There are piece by piece by piece, and that you may know nothing about them because you don't go into certain areas of your district. You don't, you may not know that this particular area is infested with, I'd say abandoned houses because you ain't went to look. It's not, it's in your area where you live at you're going to look. You're going to see it because you're living there. But we're looking for representations in the area District 2, District 1, people that live there and participate in that area. I don't know that a lot of people that live in District 2, who up here lives in District 2? Can I ask that question? Who up here lives in District 2?
I think that's me.
That's you, Robert? I want to know who lives in District 2 up here now. What about District 1? Who lives in District 1? You got one, two people living District 1? Three people that live in District 1? Okay, y'all got old representation, and we got underrepresentation. See what I'm saying? That's why that doesn't work. It works if we allow everybody to have equal representation. Equal. And now you got three people in one district, and that's why it doesn't work. I don't want to make it a race thing because it's not a race thing. I'm from Dillon Springs, too. I graduated from Dillon Springs High, and I'm not ashamed of it. That's why, but when I went to school there, I integrated, we integrated Dillon Springs in 1970, we're talking history. And it's 1970, man, it wasn't nowhere near where it is now, let me tell you. I was dead. But we're not going back, we're going forward. We're trying to make progression. Younger people are coming here and want to need a voice in this thing. We're getting old. We are. And we need some young voices here to make this thing work, and we got to get that from being able to vote for who we want in there, okay? I know, see?
All right. I think that's, yeah, so we have, I think that's enough for now. Council, do you have any questions, comments that you'd like to make before we get into the approval?
I think we can close the public hearing and then...
Motion, my Lamb Williams, to close the public hearing. Second by Gilbert. Madam President, would you call for the votes?
Dugos?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
All right. Well, item, item 17, approve the adoption of an ordinance to create council districts for the establishment of three districts, three council districts for the establishment of three districts and two at large for a total of five council seats.
May I discuss that?
Okay, open for discussion on the council. Wes?
So first of all, thank you all for being here. I wish every council meeting we looked at and we saw this many people sitting here. Generally, we see about the same four people out of the area, and they have to be here. So, thank you all for being here, first of all. Secondly, I have gotten lots of phone calls today because unfortunately, most people didn't know anything about this before yesterday or today. And that's really concerning to me because this is a major change in the way we elect our representatives in the city. And so I think it's important that there's a good education among all of our citizens. And it was mentioned that I don't feel like it's my responsibility or my privilege, I guess, to vote on this issue. I think this affects everybody in the city of Dillon Springs, and I believe that everybody in the city of Dillon Springs should have the opportunity to vote on this, whichever way they want to go, it needs to be voted on. And so I, and I failed to mention how much I appreciate the conversations that I've had with the committee that started this whole project to begin with. They have listened intently to me, and I've been listening intently to them, and I can say we've had some agreement and we've had some disagreement along the lines. But I do appreciate the fact that there is involvement in our city because government works when people get involved. So I'm appreciative of that. My whole thing is, I want the city to vote on it. I, you know, I have my own personal opinions, but my personal opinions mean nothing. I represent people with the city, and if you tell me through your vote that you want this to happen, then I'm all for it. If you tell me that you don't want it to happen, I'm all for it because that's my job is to represent you. And so that's basically all I've got to say about it. And again, thank you all for being here tonight.
Stephanie, would you like to address that issue as far as what the Larson Act directs us to do?
So we're a Larson Act municipality, and everything we do falls under that act. That act specifies that cities that have seven or fewer, I'm going to read it so I don't misquote it, seven or fewer council members shall have aldermen elected from each district. So at first glance, it requires that we have districts. However, there's a provision below it that says they can do it however they want to. So it's like, it's required, but not really. You know? So you can do what you want to, what you want to do in there. It does, state law does require it to be by a vote of the council. So even if it goes to the people as a referendum, it still has to come back to the council to be voted on. So that, in theory, can happen, but that's not the procedure that the state set forward for it.
So the council can vote, as well they said they shall vote?
The council has to vote. So even if it goes to a vote of the people, it has to come back to the council and be done by one of them.
To ratify the election.
But the Larson Act's silent as to whether it can go to the people. I assume it could. The Larson Act contemplates it being done by the council.
Well, I want to echo Councilman Wesley's comments, you know, and just like he mentioned, I'm one vote, and I have an opinion, but my opinion is not, is not law, nor do I want it to be law. I got a lot of phone calls, I've gotten text messages, Facebook messages, and I've only had one person that's for it, more or against it. And I think a lot of people are more confused than anything else. I'm not anti-districts, but I've heard Silver mention today that I think the people should decide, and I would like to see it go before a vote of the, a vote of the people. If that's not possible, I would even consider a series of hearings where we take the time to go into each area and listen to what people have to say, so we, to get to, at least if I knew that I had heard from, and we talk about representation, well, I think we should hear from everyone. And so as far as I'm concerned, I sat down, and I really thank you for the work y'all have done on this, and again, I'm not, I'm not against it. I'm not. But I do think that we're kind of, kind of rushing into this. I do think that we need to take that time to hear from more people. I think a lot of people are confused. I just, this, you're asking us to change the way that the people are represented. They elect us to represent them. So for me, I have not, I've, I've heard a lot of yeses, I've heard a lot of noes. I've heard a lot more, personally, I've heard a lot more noes than I've heard yeses. Maybe it's ignorance, I don't know. But again, I think we should, I think we should hear from a lot more people. I think we should work, work harder to hear from more people.
Would you say one thing, does that matter?
I think it's closed, my brother.
Okay. They brought the Larson Act up.
The Larson Act does allow the city council to divide into districts without going, without voting on it. You, as a council, all being voted at large, can be, can divide into districts and assign council to a district without having to do all of this. It's in the Larson Act. If you look it up, it's there.
Yes, sir. That's what we're explaining. The council has the power to do it, and their, their vote will be what decides it. If they can send it, I mean, in theory, you could send it as a referendum. But...
A referendum, not a, I think that's, and then we would, we could use that as information for us.
But with the amount of people who don't really understand what's happening, and with, with the changes that are being made, again, I'm not anti-districting, but I am concerned about a vote for it right now without hearing from, without knowing that we've gone to any, every area and heard from everyone.
And I have to echo, my concern is that I got, well, I've had to charge my phone twice today. And most of the concern was, we didn't know anything about this. This is the first we've heard of it. And I don't think that that's fair to do our, our, to make a decision when people don't know.
It was put on the agenda. Because their representatives didn't inform them. I'm here.
All right. Marbury, comments at all?
Not, not so much, Mayor. All right. The, the gravity of the vote concerns me a bit. It's, again, we're not trying to choose a new vendor for Ponce for a lift station. This is a complete reconsideration on the process of representation, the most sacred right that we have as Americans. And I hate to just say I don't have an opinion one way or the other. I personally do have an opinion. But that's not as relevant at the moment. The, the thing that matters to me is, is the gravity of this choice right now with this council with so little knowledge in the community about this issue. I, I just, I, I personally feel at this point that it would be irresponsible of me to pull the trigger on such a grand restructuring in such a significant part of the way that we conduct our, our city's government. Let, let me say that before today, I heard from one person who this would be affected by, in support of, and none in opposition to it. Today, 100% of the phone calls that I got, which were way more than the one person that I heard from, 100% were opposed to it. Like, so how does all of that play in? I can't formulate my desire as a representative, which by the way, the root of that is, is to re-present the, the will of those that elected you. And I, I don't feel like that I have the ability right now to re-present a broad-based consensus on what we should do with this. And, and that's, that's where I stand. So, thank you, Mayor.
I want to add, I want to, I want to add something else. As a voter, one of the things that I've noticed is that we've had six people run for five seats for the past several elections, okay? As Councilman Wesley just pointed out, this room is usually empty, and it's open here for, to, you know, to come and speak, and most people don't. Volunteerism is, is dying, and I would really like to see it revived. I know we have some great people in the community, everybody's busy, but it is. So that's a concern of mine. The other concern of mine is that when you start dividing into districts, then, and again, I'm speaking as a voter, then I care about my district, and I'm going to try to work with the other two to try to get what I want for my district. So though I think that it could unite us, it could also divide us, which is one of the reasons that I really want to hear from more people. As far as, is, is not being represented, I could be anywhere, I could be anywhere in this city in 10 minutes. My cell phone is on, is on every card, I, I got it in my pocket now for anybody who wants it. It's also on the website, and I count a blessing to be asked. If you have a problem, I want to hear about it. And I know that the rest of these councilors are the same way. Absolutely. So again, I am not saying I'm against this, but I am against this the way it is tonight. I want to hear from more people. The last conversation I had about districts, I was very uncomfortable, and the question was asked, would you be interested in continuing the dialogue? I said, absolutely, I would. I, I want to hear from more people. And here it is before a vote, and I think there should be a lot more dialogue with a lot more people.
I hate to, I don't want to feel like I'm just piggybacking on what my three other councilmembers said. When we did, after the flood, when the city was a ghost town and nobody was here, and we started holding public meetings and town hall meetings at the schools and, well, wherever we could be, we had so much turnout and learned so much from all over the city. I truly believe, like, it is such a disservice for us to have not had something like that from people who want to have it. If it affects everybody, I feel like everyone's got to be not just in the paper notified, not just reading, but why would we not, we managed to tell people then, why would we not tell them about this now? I am also very concerned about being, having five people vote for it. Also, I don't want to discount, I mean, true concerns and very real concerns of not having everyone be represented, but I know for me, as a woman, where I've been my council member for, before I was here, like, before I was on the council, and, you know, and few others, you know, I mean, it was hard. But Mr., you know, Councilman Perkins was here. He would never close the door. I never felt bad about going to him or asking anything or calling him. I enjoy being able to, well, before I'm council, be able to call people. If I couldn't get in touch with them, call someone else. I, I truly believe some of the issues with the way people may perceive the council is the fact that when they call the city, we're not here. We are not here. We're not here because our council has secondary jobs or, while this is our primary and we want to do everything with it, those jobs do pay our bills, and we have to be able to live in our area and pay those bills. So I do believe that some of the issues... And here it is before a vote and I think there should be a lot more dialogue with a lot more people.
I hate to, I, I don't want to feel like I'm just piggybacking on what my three other councilmembers said. When we did, after the flood, when the city was a ghost town and nobody was here and we started holding, uh, public meetings and town hall meetings at the schools and, well, wherever we could be, um, we had so much turnout and learned so much, um, from all over the city. I truly believe like it is such a disservice for us to have not had something like that from people who want to have it. If it affects everybody, I, I feel like everyone's got to be not just in the paper notified, not just reading, but why would we not, we managed to tell people then, why would we not tell them about this now? I am also very concerned about being, having five people vote for it. Also, I don't want to, uh, discount, I mean, true concerns and, and very real concerns of, uh, not having everyone be represented, but, uh, I know for me, as a woman, uh, where he's been my councilmember for, before I was here, like before I was on the council and, you know, um, and, and people, you know, I mean, it was hard. But Mr., uh, you know, Councilman Perkins was here. He would never close the door. I never felt bad about going to him or asking anything or calling him. I enjoy being able to, at, well, before I'm council, be able to call people. If I couldn't get in touch with them, call someone else. I, I truly believe some of the issues with the way, uh, people may perceive the council is the fact that when they call the city, we're not here. We are not here. We're not here because our council has secondary jobs or, um, while this is our primary and we want to do everything with it, those jobs do pay our bills. And we have to be able to live in our area and pay those bills. So, I do believe that some of the issue is the fact that when you call, there is no clerk for us. There, I mean, well, I mean, Buffy is clerk for everyone and, and the mayor. She has a lot, she has a lot. But when they call, they not, we don't have an office number. They're not calling and we're sitting here waiting for them to come in. That's hard. And then they don't understand why that is. Uh, but I, I agree, I'd like to see every thought. I would like to see more information for the city, for the constituents of the city, towards them at their convenience. Yes, sir.
Can I have a part of information if I can? If I can? You're quick.
State your name.
Ray Riley, 612 Lynnwood Street. You were saying that, uh, that you didn't, that people didn't have enough time to review the information or what have you. Uh, if I could ask, how much time did you all have to review the information? How, when did you know it was going to be on the, uh, the agenda?
On this agenda?
Yes. When, when did you all know? Last council, which was a month ago, correct? Two, two weeks ago?
Well, this one went way. Yeah, had the outside, so it was, it was.
Four weeks ago, which is a month ago, right? So, so I, I guess the, the reason, I guess my question is, you knew it was going to be on the, on the agenda. Why didn't you go and, and go around and knowing that it was going to be on the agenda?
I did go and talk.
So that's, that's on the question. And I just want to know. That's, that's all.
Well, I was like, Ray, we, we did get information from obviously the group that was, that put this, that asked for this to be put on the agenda. So that information we received. As far as us going out to people, our neighbors and talking to them, that I did do. But I still agree, I, I don't think, I mean, like Leslie said, you know, right? Knocking on doors all day. You can knock on doors all day and not really speak to anybody or catch people at different times.
Right. But I mean, social, social media is, I mean, I mean, yeah, but I'm just saying, but, but the social media goes, goes wide, you know? But I, I, I just wanted to know if, if you all reached out. I, I did see a post from, from, uh, Chief Wesley. But I mean, you represent all of us. So, we, I'm just thinking you all should have started blasting and saying, it's just me.
We could, but we could. And I, I'll, I'll say we didn't, I mean, I, there's no question we did not. But along with that, it goes back to the key that our people are not educated in the way their government works. So, yes, we could all blast. I'm, I'm sure our constituents, most of them are not, because they don't know that they have five at-large seats. They don't know that we're not on the parish. They don't know that we only vote city limits. I mean, that's, is very concerning. Um, but like I said, I, I just don't, my issue is we could blast everything. If we just start blasting and picking and choosing and picking, we don't put items on the agenda. If, maybe if it was that way and we own, the agenda only contained the items that we wanted to put on it, then yeah, we would blast them. But it's the city that puts it on their agenda and then we vote, um, you know?
Okay, look, in order, as much as I'd love to hear, I, I see three or four faces that I would love to hear from, but we, the, the public hearing has been closed. The council now has the information that they need. Okay, let's, let's, all right, let me, let me rephrase that. Let me rephrase that. How many people want to come back up and speak again? Okay, that's right. So you. Okay, so, hang on. Anybody else want to get back up and come to the podium again? All right, so this, everybody, everybody that has your hand raised right now, you will come up and we're going to give you two minutes, okay? So, uh, Ms. Reed, you want to come up first?
My name is Andrea Bell, 3074 Next Street, Dunsborough, Louisiana, 70726. I, I think I have a question too. So far, you guys, I think two or three of you have said that you've gotten several phone calls from people, um, that have been against the, the zoning or, or the map. And again, you got, you got, I'll say that you represent the city as a whole. Um, you have several people here right now that are yeses and none of your no's are here to speak on their behalf. Ms. Amber, you said that people are unfamiliar. So if they don't know that they have five city councils, why would you want to put such an important vote back into the people's hands? Because you yourself just said that we don't know.
I don't like, no.
And so, I mean, I want to make sure that we're clear about, we want to take ownership about it at some point and only for certain things. We are here now and we are a part of the city that you guys represent right now. We are yeses. And you're looking us in the face. None of your no's are here. You got your phone call, which means they know. We can't say that they don't know. They've called your phone and they know what happened, but they chose not to come here today. So today now, you have the opportunity to do exactly what we elected you to do. Make the decision. It's either yes or no. And then another question, how much would it cost the taxpayers or us to even put this election on if we decided to have an election?
It depends on if there is, if, if there's already an election going on and if it's a share, it's a, I mean, there's a lot of different, I mean, it's not cheap, I might even tell you.
Of course.
I will say though, Ms. Bell, how long have you known about this?
I've known about this as long as you have.
For what line?
Yeah, as long, as long as it's been, as long as you have known about it. That was when I found out about it. It has been a concern, but the development of it, it coming to, coming to light, I found out the same time that you guys found out. You know, I'm, I'm not a part of the committee, not a part of what's happening, but just the same time that you knew, of course, several of us have mentioned to the mayor several times, year after year after year, that we were interested in having districts. But to, for it to finally come to light, no, this is, this is us finding out about it at the same time.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Uh, Jackie?
Two quick questions. I've heard several people say that constituents didn't know. I'm asking, what's the process? This is the first public hearing. So anytime a public hearing is declared, what is the process for notifying the public about that meeting? And was this any different from any previous?
Buffy, it was exactly the same process that we've always used.
We advertised it. First, we introduced it and it was noted on whether we could authorize it. We authorized it. So that was at the first meeting, which was, was, was a month ago. And then we advertised it in the paper and then we do our agenda and then we're good.
So what you're telling me is that the process you followed for this public meeting has been followed for every prior public meeting? So for me to hear the council people indicate, thank you for what you do, that their constituents didn't know, is that on you, on me, or what proactive steps they're telling me about? They're reacting to the calls. They got, when do you go out and be upfront and notify or have a town hall or have a meeting or, what are we doing before we're reacting to the calls you got today?
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Okay, the only thing that I would like to add at this point. Say your name. My name is Brenda Edwards. Thank you. The only thing that I wanted to add at this point is that the time is short. I found out about this, Ms., Pastor Leslie called me this week. That's the first I had heard of this at all. So, you know, there are a lot of people who, who are not aware of this. Um, Mr. Riley came up and he's, he, I asked him before the meeting. I said, do you know about this? And he said, I don't know anything about this. So there are people that this is the first they heard. So the yeses might show up and the no's might show up, but I think the public needs to be more informed. That's the only thing I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mayor. Next, uh, who's, uh, CJ, are you still monitoring? Okay.
I'm sorry.
You monitor, you control?
Yes, I am still monitoring. I've got the list. I did, thanks, sir.
Alonzo Shue, 317 Upstreet. I think I'll be much less than two minutes. I just have a couple of questions really. For whatever it's worth, I'm for it. I like the idea of moving forward in this direction. One of the reasons is because this is how it scales up, right? This is how it works on every level, not this level. And although I don't have the statistics, I didn't have the time to do the research, I would say the way this is done is probably in the minority. And so I have some questions. I think Jackie Reed had shared, maybe the process has an issue we can consider. Maybe we can consider if the process didn't work when it's done this way all the time, maybe the process needs to be reconsidered. This isn't an exact statistic y'all may know. Um, on the last election, about 30% of the people turned out. They don't even know how it works and they're not showing up. I'm not sure that's the best way to go. That's a wondering that I have. I also think that as it scales up on the way our government works, um, the purpose of the election is for the decision makers to make decisions. That's why the elections occur. Uh, we don't have a general populous vote on decisions of important magnitude. That's what the representatives do. So I'd like to offer, maybe we can consider that work that way. Another concern that maybe you could use my mind is this only has to get delayed a few times and the year window closed. Oops, sorry, maybe next time. So I'd be concerned that a couple punts, punt it four years. And so if we could all just give that serious consideration and, um, if you would care to share your opinions that you all stated that you have, I would be interested in hearing them, but that's up to you. Thanks.
I would like to, uh, I believe my, when I was speaking, I was a little bit misunderstood. I don't mean that people don't know that they go and vote on issues. What I mean is they get to where they don't realize that city only, but they're, these council members only handle this, just like with streets. They call us, the city doesn't pay the streets, but we do want to hear from you because we want to pass it up to the parish level so that they can handle that issue. It's not that, there's just some things that we legally do Larson Act and our responsibilities cannot address. Um, and that's what I'm talking about, with people not understanding or knowing, where it is and they can't call us here to ask. And then they feel like they're not, some people, that they are not being represented because they don't know where to find us. They feel like they have to come to our homes.
Okay, sir. Name and address again, please.
Darryl Scott, 218 East Street, Dunsborough, Louisiana. My question is, what was the last thing that you voted for to allow the public to vote for, that you should have allowed? Is there anything that you sent to, to our general ballot, the general election, anything linked that you sent to the general election?
Sales tax issue for law enforcement.
Sales tax issue for law enforcement.
And that was a very long drawn out.
Okay, we had, we had the fours and the, the against and the fours for that, right? And you went with the what? The people that was for it? That was at the meeting or the people that was against or we sent it out to the people? To the general public and the general public decided? Okay, so we're going to take this and put that on that same level?
That's what I'd like to do.
But you just decided a lot of other major issues?
Monumental change in the way we, the way we used to like to represent. It's a monumental change. And just because we have a certain number of yeses and a certain number of no's in this room, doesn't mean it's the same in the entire city. And I think, if, if we're talking about a democracy.
That's right.
What's a greater example of a democracy or republic is that we allow the public to decide.
Hold on one second, Mr. Jeff. Let me, let me say something. When I elected you to be the council, I gave you the power to do that. Because I can't be here for every election, even the big ones or the little ones. We're not going, I'm, I'm going to let the public decide this. And when I, once all five or six of you got up, were elected to be here, you elected to represent the people right now. Now, right now, you're the people we've chosen to represent us and make decisions for us. And this decision should be made by you. Cause we elected you to nominate.
Keep in mind, you elected us as we sit now.
Right.
Which is a totally different way than if we vote to change it, it would be a totally different way.
Well, let me understand. So, Mr. Jeff, you couldn't run for the first district? None of you could run for any of those districts? So what would be different? What would be different?
I'll tell you what we do just now. I'm just going to be honest with you.
Please tell me.
So when we start districts, you know who I'm concerned about?
Who?
My district. I'm not concerned about you. I'm going to give.
You're concerned about your district? Excuse me, excuse me. You're concerned about your district now? No, sir. You're concerned about the district in which you live in mostly. Cause if I was in your district, I'd be concerned about my district mostly. I'm going to pay attention to the work, to the livelihood of my own self. I'm telling you, if I'm sitting up there, and that's basically what happens.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Thank you, sir.
I just have, I just have.
Hey, everybody.
I just have a quick question. So just because you live in a district, you don't have to run in that district, right? Can you just run at large?
You can run at large, do that large seat.
All right. So just because you live, don't be threatened by your district. You can run at large. Okay, just one.
So the question, so just so you know, the question would be, why don't anybody run at large if they could just run in their district? What if we don't have people running in a district? Or what if we don't have people running at large? We only had six people run this last time. What happens then? What's that?
We have leadership living in that village.
Well, just answer your question, Jeff. We, we conclude after the question.
We would appoint someone. So we wouldn't hold a vote, we'd just appoint people. Okay.
Till the next election.
Greetings. My name's Rachel Etto at 303 Sullivan Street. Um, just a question. Um, I know you all stated that you had phone calls and opposition, but with the, if we were to do this again and you got the same phone calls and we have a petition of 200 people, all 200 are not here that are on this paper, plus your majority people that are here, what would your decision be then?
I just, I just wanted to clarify what I said a while ago. First, oh, I'm sorry, Robert Ballard, 778 East Street. Besides the fact that 200 people on a petition, when there's 10,000 constituents in the city is not very many. But the Larson Act allows you to go ahead and district without not being elected at large. You can divide the city according to your districts, assign a councilperson to that district so that the people know who to contact under the Larson Act without having to vote on this at all. You as the mayor and city council can do that.
Is that correct? Stephanie, how, is that a?
You can create divisions.
You want me to pull it up in the show table?
No, no, I'm, no, that's Stephanie to kind of explain that out, please.
You can create divisions. Councilman would be elected at large, but then each, each person elected is given a specific division to represent. So, the divisions are for the purpose of nomination and election of councilmen and shall be designated alphabetically. So you would have, you know, you'd have five people elected and then the one with the most votes gets Division A, the one with the next votes gets Division B, and it's assigned down the line. So you may get Division A even though you don't live in that area.
How would the divisions be? Just how would, by population or?
You would do it by population, just like you did that one. But instead of being elected to that division, you are just randomly assigned.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Name?
Okay, Elizabeth Furnas, 288 North College Street East. Just to touch on real, well, I have other things to say, but just to touch on what Mr. Robert Ballard said about a district and then assigning someone to that district to be over that district, isn't that similar, and I don't even know if we still have this now, but how one council member was kind of the liaison for the. Police department? Or do we still do that? Cause I have no idea. Okay, so is that perhaps what he was discussing, having a particular council, not necessarily, just as a liaison? That what Robert was talking about. But what I came here for is, um, I just walked in the door, however, I've watched the entire meeting on Facebook. So, as I'm driving. Don't tell. However. Sorry, sorry. Um, I had the radio on. I wasn't watching. I was listening. Um, anyway, cause I am concerned about this. I am, those that are in the audience that know me know that I am not a public speaker. Um, but I am in a disagreement with this because I don't feel, I feel like if one person is in a particular district, all they're going to care about is that district. That's the way it is. Just look at our parish government. So I feel like having it at large, everyone is concerned. I did text every one of these council members and four of the five answered me immediately. And that is much appreciated. I just, I think there's not enough information out there for the public in general. I think it's too big of a concern on changing how our government works in the city of Dem Springs to not ask the people in the city of Dem Springs. I was not asked, I was not one of the two hundred participants that signed a petition. Nobody knocked on my door. And we will go back to nobody knocking on doors. I can tell you, all five of those people up there, all of you have knocked on my door before. And to go on with that. To all of that.
Sure, you're right. Hey, the public hearing's been closed. This is extra. We really have to limit it to the two minutes for everyone.
Okay, so your time's up.
I'm in disagreement.
Okay, do we have one more here? Do y'all come up after him?
Before he talks, I want to clarify something that I said because I wasn't real familiar with that question about divisions. I'm gonna read what it says. It says, "The Board of Aldermen made by ordinance provide the board into divisions such that aldermen are elected at large, but each alderman is elected to a specific division of the board. Such divisions shall be for the sole purpose of nomination and election of aldermen and shall be designated alphabetically. Of the initial aldermen to be elected under the provisions of this paragraph, the alderman senior in point of continuous service shall provide, preside over Division A and the other aldermen of the municipality shall preside over the other designated divisions in according to their respective periods of continuous service. If two or more aldermen in a municipality have served continuously for the same length of time, the alderman senior in age shall provide, preside over the division first in alphabetical order. The successor to any alderman in any municipality shall preside over the same division as his predecessor. A candidate for such nomination and election to the office of alderman shall, at the time of filing his declaration as a candidate, designate the one division of the board for which he is a candidate." So they would still run for a specific seat. The electors within the municipality shall elect one alderman from among the candidates for each division of the board.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Paul Kirk, 406 Centerville Street, Northeast, Demos Ridge, 70726. Leadership's tough, guys. Most recently, I had to close to, had to make the decision to close out operations in California, Oregon, Washington, Arizona, Nevada, with fourteen distribution centers and seven hundred stores. It wasn't easy. It was hard, knowing that I was taking the lives of those people and putting into, basically putting it into a, into a tough situation. During that time, I worked aggressively to make sure that the leaders of that market, of those markets, had jobs. And I'm proud to say that we got everyone placed but one. Your job is tough, but you have a responsibility to bring the city back into compliance with the Larson Act. Actually, into compliance. We have never been there. Don't legislate from your bench like, like, like a rogue judge. We have guidelines that we have to follow. And it's clearly defined in the Larson Act, although we can go through and pick out pieces and determine it. But you all should have that clear understanding of what is responsible for the Larson Act and how we should be operating as a city. And shame on you by allowing, and I'm gonna be bold and forgive me if I offend you, your fears to guide your vote. I heard a lot of flowerly, flower words. You guys are gifted like any Louisiana with a silver tongue. I did not hear, and how cowardice it is, any of you telling the people who you represent what your stance was. We deserve to know. Because if this goes to the people, we deserve to know who we're voting for so our rights are voted for. So we ask you guys, tell us your stance and vote properly and bring us back into compliance to Larson Act.
Many of you have said you don't feel comfortable voting on this. Many of you have said you don't feel comfortable voting on this because the public hasn't had enough time to know about this issue. However, you all felt comfortable enough to vote the same night for an alcohol distance limit to a church. What is the difference about this issue? What is the difference about this issue?
That issue, we actually had them come back and give us information about it. We did postpone it. They came back with answers. That was not voted on the same night.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was to get more information.
All right.
Kayla Reed, 420 Foster Street. If this issue is punted, how long would that take? So would, if it's punted, would it be available for the next election in time?
How long would it have? Is it two more?
So October, the October, October eleventh is there, there's an election, public, public election. I don't know what's gonna be on it. And then November fifteenth, there is another state ballot. Let's see, the first one, the deadline would be June eleventh, yeah. And then the second would be September twentieth of November.
Twenty twenty-six? So there's enough time if it is punted tonight?
I'm sorry, what?
There is enough time if it is punted tonight? So if it's punted, when will it be back on the agenda?
It depends on what they mean by punted. They, they could take it tonight.
You're all saying you don't have enough time.
They can take it tonight and they could ask for more information or have another hearing or something like that. And then they could vote on it again, you know? Or if they send it to an election, my suggestion would be that they send it by June eleventh to get on the October ballot. The estimated cost for that is anywhere from seven thousand to thirty thousand. It just depends on what else goes on that ballot and what the cost share is with the other things put on that ballot. So it would have to go on that ballot on October eleventh. And then they would have to vote on it at the next council meeting and it will refer it to be done.
Okay, so just, so I'm clear on what you just said. If it is punted tonight, it will cost the taxpayers seven thousand dollars? Possibly? The minimum is seven dollars if it is punted. Or you could vote tonight.
You could vote next month.
Anybody else? Somebody else? Okay. More questions?
I don't have any more questions. I just think that with us being seven square miles, we're still very small. I know that as long as I've been here, we've worked very, very hard, and I know that I have, to look at Demos Springs as a whole, not just where I live. And I've lived in many places across the city throughout my twenty-three years of serving on here. I've probably lived in all three districts over those times, over that time frame. But it didn't matter where I lived because whenever I go out in the public, I am looking at what's best for the whole city. And that's not gonna change. And I think that we all, we know what direction we're going in tonight, or we should. I don't think that there's any reason to put this off by any means. I mean, numbers came back, but I want to say that there's five thousand six hundred and ninety-one registered voters in the city. Those are registered voters. There's about sixty people here tonight, which is a great crowd. We've heard from probably about the same. You, you know.
Sure.
You know. You know what works best for our city. You know what's in the best interest of us. I'm ready to move forward.
All right. Okay, so we need a motion?
I make a motion that we deny the adoption of this ordinance.
Motion by Lamb Williams, second. Second by Jeff Wesley. Mayor Kirk, it's called for the vote, please.
Dugas?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Motion fails. All right. We're moving on to item.
Hold it down, please. Need to still remember that.
Item number eighteen. Authorized Major Landry to enter to a property with ever-vigilance of the parish to relocate a lift station in connection with the Cook Road Improvement Project. Is anybody here reported to watch this?
Chad was out there.
Chad was out there? So this is in connection with the Cook Road project with the lift station? Okay, there you go, sir. Thank you, sir. See, I wrote eighteen, yes, sir. Come on up, please. Just explain the relocation of the lift station for Cook Road.
Yeah, that was just, during the Cook Road project, city had a couple desires different than what we had in the plan. So we just kind of had a couple tweaks, adding the wet well, making a few changes. So that proper endeavor bridge between you guys and the parish.
Okay.
The parish, for that project, the parish did end up paying a good bit of the city's portion for some utility movement and that kind of thing. But anyway, this is just a preference thing to move that wet well, get it away from the road a little bit more.
All right.
So that's, that's what eighteen is.
All right, item nineteen. Uh, wait, I don't. You got, need a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion by, uh, Dugas to approve.
Second.
Second by Gilbert. Mayor Kirk, call for the votes.
Dugas?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Poole? Wesley?
Yes.
Item nineteen, the brief change order attachment two to install new wet well tie-in to, to, to exist, convert, exist, et cetera, for an amount of one hundred fifty-seven thousand, four hundred fifteen dollars and one cent for the Cook Pump Station and Peace Highway, Fort Delada eighty-three, one forty-five.
So it's related to that item just before, mayor? That was a corporate endeavor agreement and this is the actual change order, the dollar amount that's associated with it.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lamb Williams?
Second.
Second by Dugas. Mayor Kirk.
Dugas?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item twenty, approved change order number zero zero one in an amount of eight thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars and seventy-six cents to Armor Construction LLC for the East Railroad drainage improvements.
Yeah, mayor, that, mayor and council, this is that little drainage project by the whistle stop. There was an extra box we ended up having to add to the project near range. We thought we could use the existing box. Once they got in there, it was bricks and all this other stuff. So we had to change it out. That's what that change order is for.
It looks really good.
Thank you. And it works. Yeah.
Yes.
You may be nervous for a little while, chief, but I think we got it figured out.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Lamb Williams, second. Approved, second by Gilbert. Mayor Kirk, call for the votes.
Dugas?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item twenty-one, approved payment application zero zero one in an amount of one hundred twenty-three thousand, one hundred fifty-three dollars and eight cents to Armor Construction LLC for the East Railroad Avenue Drainage Improvement.
Same project, just the, this is the first payout. Though probably I have one more with the retainage coming back to you guys. So we do recommend to approve.
Motion by Wesley. Second by Gilbert. Mayor Kirk.
Dugas? Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item twenty-two, approved a one-year service agreement effective May fifteen, twenty twenty-five, through May fourteen, twenty twenty-six for Falcon Playgrounds for Kids Corner Playground for Annual Safety Inspection and recommendations in an amount of eight hundred dollars.
Sounds wonderful, what comes with that.
Sir?
It sounds wonderful. You want to, is there anything you want to add on that?
Do what they do.
What do they cover?
That's what they go, they, they, they go through doing a safety inspection on all the equipment, all the playground equipment. And if one needs to be replaced, they're the vendor that, that does it for us.
Okay, I know we recently had an issue with a, with a lock. So they don't look at the site, they just look at their equipment. But yeah, that's dope.
And then eight hundred dollars is just for their, their inspection.
For the annual.
We get a copy of that inspection so we kind of know what needs to be replaced.
Can we make it up to?
Once, yeah, once it's on, absolutely.
And I make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Gilbert, second, by Dugas.
Dugas?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item twenty-three, authorized Major Landry to utilize State Contract Number four four zero 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 three zero one six five with Sharp to replace and update the gas department main office printer, copier, and scanner. It's the main printer that they use for everything in that, in that building.
Motion by Wesley.
Second.
Second by Lamb Williams. Mayor Kirk.
Dugas?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item twenty-four, approved for an additional one-year term from August, the first twenty twenty-five to July third, first twenty twenty-six on a contract with Standard Printing Company, now called SPC dash SEBIS Direct. That's who prints, sorts, and bails all of our utility bills.
Motion by Wesley.
Second.
Second by Gilbert. Mayor Kirk.
Dugas? Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item twenty-five, authorized Major Landry to enter to an agreement with L King Company LLC for the city of Demos Springs Vortex Script Removable System Rehab dash twenty twenty-five in an amount of three hundred eighty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-six dollars. So we have Daryl with us tonight from.
Yes, so this was by one, the bids were accepted at the last meeting. And this is just to authorize mayor to enter into the contract. It does allow for ninety days for construction, both of them. This is for the wastewater treatment facility on Forest Drive.
Motion to authorize?
This was actually authorized in last year's budget. Just move it over to the new budget coming up. Motion, motion by Gilbert, second by Dugas.
Mayor Kirk.
Dugas?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Item twenty-six, authorized Major Landry to enter to an agreement with L King Company LLC for the city of Demos Springs Traveling Bridge Sand Filter Rehab dash twenty twenty-five in an amount of four hundred ninety-five thousand, one hundred seventy dollars and forty cents.
Again.
Same thing.
Yes, and ninety calendar days for construction for this as well.
Same motion.
Motion by Gilbert.
Second.
Second by Dugas.
Dugas?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Wesley?
Motion to approve by Lamb Williams, second by Wesley.
Dugas?
Yes.
Gilbert?
Yes.
Lamb Williams?
Yes.
Wesley?
Yes.
Thank you all.